All right, we'd like to welcome you to the last city council meeting of 2016. And I'm very, I'm honored to be the mayor pro tem of the last meeting. So we'll call this meeting to order and we would like to excuse the mayor. And I am the mayor pro tem for tonight. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Josh Walker, who is our director of the Chamber of Commerce in town.
The president.
And then our opening remarks will be given by David Larson.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we are very grateful this evening to gather together as a community. We're grateful for the opportunity to govern ourselves. And we pray that during this holiday season, we'll be able to feel the spirit of Christmas and the spirit of the holidays and enjoy the blessings that come to us for living in this wonderful land and this wonderful country. We pray that as we spend this time together this evening, that we'll be able to feel thy direction and be able to interact well and in a way that will be beneficial for all involved. Again, we're grateful for the opportunities presented to us and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, to start off with, we have, this is our time for opening remarks. So if anyone, this is your chance to talk about any item that's not on the agenda or that's on the agenda. So if you have any, what's that? Oh, would you like to do that first?
Sure.
What says opening remarks and then it says?
Opening remarks with David.
Oh, open session, sorry. I thought David was just gonna be the opening remarks all day long.
That'd be great.
Anyway, so maybe before we do that, we should approve the agenda.
I make the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Fast tonight.
We like it.
Sid and Lynn. I hope there weren't any changes to the agenda.
No, I don't believe there are.
All right, now we'll go into the open session. So if anybody would like to, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. All right, now we'd like to go into the open session. If anyone would like to make a comment, they can come to the mic and you have about three minutes to tell us something. All right. Seeing none, we'll close. Oh, this is gonna be good. All right, now it's the consent items. These have been, are items which have been discussed beforehand. Does anyone, would, anybody have any questions about the consent items?
I have a quick one. I was hoping I could get an update on the 4,000 North Sewer Project, where we're at with it. Just in general, how many signatures we've got on? I think there was a time when we had a resident that was still not committed, maybe?
Yeah, we got signatures from all the residents on the agreement. Marty can update on the actual progress of the project.
Thanks.
They were finishing up their final punchless items this week. So they should be done with that. This is, we'll expect around, I think, the January 3 meeting that we'll have the final pay request. There is a change order that will be coming with that as well for a sewer line issue that we had during the construction. But the project has been completed and it went well. I think it looks great. If you had a chance to drive down the road, nice to have a new road.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right.
Here pro tem, I make a motion to approve the consent items for tonight.
By Eric, second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Boarding Commission appointments, we don't have any? All right, so then we'll go straight into, we'll turn the time over to Josh Walker. This is our executive director. I didn't know what the exact title was. I don't know if I put executive.
It said president on your email, all right.
We're having that discussion tomorrow. So, yes, Josh Walker, I have been involved in the community for quite a while. I actually used to sell ads at the Daily Herald. I was the weekly newspaper rep, so I did the Pleasant Grove Review, back when it existed. And so I worked there for quite a while and then I went off and started my own company. I did, I've been doing magazines for Chambers and Cities for the last four and a half years. And so I do the Linden Days Magazine, I do Steel Days, was trying to get Strawberry Days for a while, but you know, I'm doing this gig now. So yeah, we're really excited to see what the Chamber is going to be able to do this next year. I've been serving on Chamber boards, both in the Lehigh and American Fork and Pleasant Grove. I've been on all three boards for the last six years. So if you add all that up, I've got over 18 years of Chamber experience. And, yeah, do you have any questions?
Tell us about the event that you had on Thursday.
We just had our annual Christmas luncheon, which is a combined luncheon with the American Fork Chamber. And it was over at the Stonegate Reception Center. In the past, I think the most we've ever had was 40 people at the event. We had 90 people come this time. We had the American Heritage High School Acapella Choir perform. And we had a little visit from Santa Claus and then I probably sang a song or two as well. So, and actually, I just sent out an email to as many of the city employees as I could find their emails, just a little Merry Christmas from the Chamber. And I did a little music video that you will be able to check out and see if you think I can really sing or not. So on a side thing, I actually, I sing in the Mormon Tabernacle Choir.
Oh, cool.
Been doing that for seven years, so.
That's really neat.
You can look for me on TV every Sunday night.
We actually do. All right, are, any questions?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thursday was awesome. Did you arrange with the band, the high school group team? That was awesome, that was a good choice. Everything about that event was nice.
Well, we plan on having every event at that level or better. Okay?
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, we have, and I'm sorry, I can't remember your first name.
Let me introduce.
Okay, so I'm just gonna turn the time over to Scott. This is the Utopia High Speed Internet.
This is Roger Timmerman, he's the executive director of Utopia. He emailed the mayor, the city council, I don't know, probably six weeks ago, six weeks or so ago, to talk a little bit about Utopia, what they do and what they provide, the service they provide. So we invited him to come and share a brief presentation about who Utopia is and what they do. So we're gonna let him get his audio visual set up here. And then we'll turn it over to him. Yes, it is, yeah.
I'll bring this over with me. All right, I broke something. I appreciate you having me here. I guess talk to it while I try to get this working, if that's not too distracting.
Scott, is there someone, or maybe David?
I've got a question before you start, Roger. Do you know my friend Jesse Claussen on the BYU IT board? Do you serve on the IT board?
I do, so yeah, I'm on their industry advisory board. So, absolutely.
He's a great guy.
He does not, I can't. Well, I can, I can talk through it, I guess.
Is that, did you bring your own, Roger?
I brought my own and then I tried the one that's here.
I would try your own again, the one that we had here, I don't know how good that one works, but try the one you brought.
Someday we'll all be standardized on the right connector. So I'll just talk to it then. So Utopia, I want to give you a little bit of background. I'm not here to pitch you on anything, I just kinda wanna let you know what it is. You probably have heard about it. Unfortunately, we generate a lot more negative newspaper articles than positive. It's not really an accurate reflection of Utopia, at least not the current Utopia. So Utopia's had problems in the past. So it was created in about 2002. Okay, that's, oh, that was promising.
Can you hear him, do you think?
It was 11 cities that created this, okay? So it starts up in Tremonton and there's kind of a patchwork of cities going all the way down to Payson that are members of the project. They created it, they said, you know, we want this fiber infrastructure in our cities. We don't want to go in on our own, so they collectively created Utopia. And they bonded and built the first phase of the project. It didn't go well and you probably have heard about that. Back in about 2009, there was a choice made whether they should move forward with the project or shut it down. They decided they want to move forward and take down additional bonds. But not all the cities wanted to do that. So they actually created a new agency called UIA. And that is where all the growth of Utopia happens, is Utah Infrastructure Agency. And no one ever hears about it because it's really the same group. So I'm in charge of both, but it's, it's actually, we have to keep separate books because the debt is owned differently by different memberships of cities, if that makes sense. So UIA moved forward, took down a bond, and we built some additional connections into the network. And really, the goal of this was to prove that it was still viable and to, and to grow the system. It was very successful, meaning that they were able to add so many customers and the demand was there to justify the debt for it. So they were able to get enough revenue to cover all the debt service for the bond and they also started, you know, cutting it back at the operational shortfall they had. So they've got another bond. And that one did very well as well. And that was a few years later. And then the last bond was taken down late last year, so it's been a little over a year since the last bond. And since that time, we've actually, we don't even have a shortfall anymore operationally. So all of the, the last three phases of debt, we're covering all the revenue from those, those bonds. And we're covering all our operational expenses and we're actually making a lot of money on top of that. The project isn't done, so that money is being reinvested in building the network. We are building and expanding the network right now at the fastest pace in Utopia's history. We build fiber past about 1,500 homes every month, which is a massive amount of construction, if you can imagine. You don't see that, as much of it's not happening in Utah County right now, it's happening in West Valley City and Leighton, some of the northern cities. Every time I see a flicker, I'm.
Roger, do you have a?
No, there's hope.
You have it on the jump drive by any chance?
I do, or, or, well, I guess I can copy it, I was gonna copy it over, but I can, yeah, that's a good idea.
You want to, I can put it on my computer and I can pull it up for you.
Just a couple charts I'd like to show.
It would be, that would be helpful.
So, so the question, you know, is why, why am I here? We've had a lot of requests from cities to say, hey, can you come talk to us about what it would look like to do a project, whether it was with or without Utopia? And we've been doing that, and in this case, I didn't get requested by the city to do that. I reached out. And the reason I did that is because if I look at the entire coverage area from Tremonton to Payson and say, where would I know that a type of project like this would be the most successful? It's Pleasant Grove. And that may sound, like I haven't, I honestly haven't said that to any other city. And the reason I say that is because our take rate for the service in Linden is over 50%, which is phenomenal, and it's the best of any of the Utopia cities. And the demand and inquiries that we get from our website and other avenues that we see, we get those as well and we collect those from, from the cities and we get a ton of that from Pleasant Grove. And so, you know, from a probability of success, you guys are right at the top. You have the highest demand, there's really bad competitive options. You don't have CenturyLink and Comcast and others upgrading and lowering prices and, you know, there just isn't, isn't a good competitive environment here. So, so we kinda say, you know? So, you know, where does that put us today? So Utopia, we're building, we're growing, we're happy. The cities aren't freaking out about this project because we're not actually a part of them anymore. In fact, every day we exist, we're increasing our net revenues. In fact, we do about $15,000 a month better every month going forward. Our revenues are over $1.2 million a month right now, which, I'll show you some charts that show that. So then the question is, well, what are we, what are we doing, why are we here? The status quo, like if, if the city did nothing with us, there was no partnership or anything, we do have an interlocal agreement with the city, much like a franchise agreement. And we do have some connections in Pleasant Grove today. We have a lot of customers that have locations in the city, business customers. We want to connect those, and so we are planning to do some, some build in the city, as long as the city's okay with that. And we follow same construction rules that anyone else would. You just kinda treat us as another telecommunications company, except that we have really good prices and really good services in partnership with all the service providers.
It's gonna come from Scott's computer.
Oh, you've got it over there, okay.
That's an old laptop, it didn't like the.
This is not recognizing your device.
Yeah, it is, it was like, it's an optical illusion. So anyways, yeah, if we don't, you know, like I said, we're going, we want to build, we want to expand and we have demand. We do a lot of connections for schools, churches and whatever. So there's a reason for us to come in, but we probably would never do any sort of fiber to the home unless there was participation from the city. Because those, fiber to the home really demands a long-term debt mechanism. And the way we do it is.
Roger, it's not letting us read your device, your, no, it doesn't, so.
All right, I'll just talk.
It looks like you're gonna be without PowerPoint today.
I will email you a couple of slides. Absolutely, yep. So the main, the main point here is we want to continue doing that. We want you, as the city, to think about projects that you have and any needs that you have. And please let us know about them and see if we can't coordinate with you on how those might happen. So we have, if you have economic development needs or whatever. If you feel like there's demand for fiber to the home in the city, we certainly feel like there is. But, you know, really, we report to our member cities. And it would only be, you know, be similar to say, if you came in and said, we, we want to pursue something, at least maybe look at a feasibility of it. We'd be happy to do that, but it's not really to our benefit, it's more to your benefit to do that, if you wanted to do that. But we're here and happy to partner with additional cities. And the partnership would not involve you joining Utopia or taking on any of the past obligations or debt of Utopia. It would just be the Pleasant Grove City Network. But the benefit of partnering with us is we have 25 companies that actually use our fiber. And they compete with each other and they, you know, and it's a great, it's the most active competitive fiber system in the country. Because usually you just, you get fiber and internet from the same company. But on Utopia, you get the fiber to your business or home and then you get all these companies saying, hey, you know, we've got really good pricing. In fact, we have a sheet that we share and it's always out of date because they're always changing their prices. So it's, it's always hard to chase that. The price that's the most common offering is a $65 a month offering. That's 250 megabits symmetrical, meaning you can download and upload at that speed. And the beauty of the model that we, we do is that $30 of that goes to the debt. So if the city did a project, you know, the city would bill $30 to the customer and that would pay back their debt service on their bond. $35 goes to the service provider, like an exmission or a veracity, and that pays for the project. So the all-in price to a subscriber is $65 a month. And that covers everybody's expenses. So it sustains itself. But you say, well, there's a take rate piece of that. If 35% of the city signs up, it pays all the debt. More than 35% sign up, you'd actually be making money. You could either spend that on something else or decrease the cost or whatever you wanted to do. And again, the reason why I'd say this might be worth taking the time with a work session or something to go through is because as we look at it, we say, what's the likelihood that we could get to a 35% take rate in Pleasant Grove so that this whole system could be built and funded? And at the end of the day, the city owns the asset and they've brought all this, you know, great benefit to the community. 35% is really easy in Pleasant Grove. It'd be almost harder not to, I mean, it's, especially where we're over 50% in Linden. From what I can tell, it's very similar from a competitive environment. So, you have questions? I mean, our, our approach really is kinda à la carte, we're like, whatever the city might want to do, we're, we're open to those dialogues. The only thing I would say, you know, my goal of the meeting would really be to, to give you time to kinda think about it and review slides and things I send you. If you feel like it's worth additional conversation, we'd love to come in. I'll bring our CFO and a director of marketing, a couple of our, our team. And we sit down and do a work session to really go into the, you know, the dollars and the financing and how that all works. But the, the best about it is we can actually present this, not as some feasibility of something we'd hoped to achieve. It's all based on the actual performance of Utopia over the last eight years. Fortunately, not the first part, which was a learning phase. But for the last eight years, it's been extremely successful and, and has actually generated net revenues above and beyond the goal of covering the debt. So anyways, that's, do you have any questions or?
Do you ever do projects, like residential projects, but just by a neighborhood or smaller than a city size?
Yes, oh, yeah, I have a slide for that, I'm, I'm missing a couple of the points. So really, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to go in and do a community of 100 homes because there's kind of a startup cost to get to some economy of scale. But a block of homes that's between 1,000 and 2,000 homes makes sense because they aggregate back to a location where we would put in redundant air conditioners and a generator and backup and facility. And that's a, kind of the sweet spot. So if the city said, well, maybe there's one part of the city where we wanted to do 2,000 homes. A 2,000 home project with a 35% take rate costs about $4.5 million. So that's expensive, but of course, if that were put on a, a bond, your debt service would be about $19,000 a month. The revenue would be about $23,000 a month. And the reason we say that's the break even scenario is because we put some room in there to cover customers that may move away and we replace those over time. So there's a churn replacement factor into that. So you actually maintain, upgrade and replace customers on that system at break even at a 35% take rate with that, those economics. And so that's, you know, we've had some cities, I don't want to call them out because they get mad at me, but other cities working with us that have wanted to do more of a phased approach. They say, you know, we don't really want to do all in, want to minimize the risk, make sure we're hitting the targets we want. And they come in at about a $4.5 million piece at a time. And we could do smaller than that, you just, your cost per address goes a little bit up because there's kind of some fixed costs in, in the shelter and the generator and things like that that scale nicely out to a size of about 1,000 to 2,000 homes.
Organic grow up from Linden across the city or something like that? Do you ever do any kind of?
Yeah, it, it would make sense to come from the south just because if I could show you a map, I could walk around with it.
Just want you to go as far as Blackhawk Drive, Blackhawk Circle?
Okay, I'm sure that's where you'd go.
You got the neighborhood all picked out, Ben, where you need it?
I mean, if you can see that, you know, the whole southern border of the city has Utopia fiber to it. In fact, we cross over the border in a few locations for connections. And so if, if you start from the south to the north, there's no cost to get to that neighborhood, we're already there. Whereas some of the cities we talked to, that's another big cost factor. I mean, it would be very expensive for us to do a Moab because getting a Moab is difficult. We're already on your doorstep and our backbone goes up along the railroad line. And so we actually have quite a bit of coverage right through the, the center of the city, well, not the center, but through the city.
So, so you are going along the railroad and so are you digging up streets or are you sidewalks?
So, the railroad path was actually a route that American Fork built 15 years ago in partnership with UDOT. And we purchased a portion of that cable. And then from that, we've, we build off from that. In Linden, we built off through that, so we're literally down every street and every road in the city.
Okay.
So there's actually a lot more connectivity coming in from the south from Linden than from our backbone. But as we would build an area, the way it works is we'd feed it from the south and feed it from the north so that any fiber cut anywhere doesn't take down any services. So we have a fully redundant ring all the way from Tremonton down to Payson. So you can't be, UDOT, I don't want to blame UDOT, UDOT's great, but there's a lot of construction on I-15. And so when that gets whacked, everything stays up and running just fine. And then we fix it and they break it.
Do you guys still have a working relationship with UEN? Work with them?
I'm doing this. Work with them a lot.
A lot. I'm doing, asking this in benefit of our library, right? UEN works a lot with libraries and so.
Yep.
Okay.
So we, we believe we're a preferred provider in the sense, you know, they issue these RFPs. In fact, there's an open one right now. And we bid on everything we can possibly get to, you know, that we can reach. We feel like we win the majority of the sites that we bid on. So it kinda puts us in a position that we believe we're one of their preferred providers whenever we're available. So part of our interest, even if the city came and said, well, we're not interested in the whole fiber to the home thing, but maybe there's some minimal routes that we need for city locations and other things. We've done that with some other cities and then we're okay with that.
You've done fiber, fiber rings for other cities?
Yeah, we're working some of those as well right now to do some additional cities that aren't quite ready to do fiber to the home. But they're trying to connect substations, there's a, you know, we're in negotiation, we're still planning things out, so I don't tell them who they are, but. There's some electrical power cities that have these substations all over the city and can't get them connected. And so we're, we're planning out and designing some projects to, to do those for them. We basically build it out at cost. We would not make money on that. But what we would do is we would put in a larger cable than what's needed for the city. And then from that cable, we can serve businesses and schools and other locations along those routes. But you're never gonna get anyone else to come in here and say, hey, we'll bid you, build you a network at cost. So that's something that we offer and are happy to do.
Any other questions? I do know, so Ken, we are doing a survey. It might be interesting to ask businesses or residents if they would be interested in. I, I would like to know what size of our population would be interested. Also, understanding that there, there is a cost to that, anyway. That would be the only thing.
I mean, really, if, you know, we can help say, hey, this is what we do, you know, these are the retail offerings. We don't set the pricing, but we know what they are just based on where our providers have come in or partners. And then we can say, here's their common offerings, and if these were available to you, would you sign up? And if you get to that 35% take rate, then your, your risk in the project is nothing. If you actually get 40 or 50%, you could either say, hey, that's some cushion in the project. I would probably go this, the route of cushion and then back off on the fees and actually lower the price. And that's your choice, you know, you, you would be collecting the debt repayment. We suggest a $30 because that's kinda where it works at a 35% take rate. But you would have the choice of either lowering price or, you know, using that revenue for other, other things. There are some limitations on cross-subsidizing one, you know, utility type service or something into other departments of the city, but you could use that to beef up your communication systems in the city, you know, and other telecommunications related projects. It could be a pretty good benefit to the city.
Where do you typically run the lines themselves, do they run under the road near the sidewalk?
So they go in the easement on the side, so there's a public utility easement, basically past the curb. We've looked a lot of like micro trenching and things like that to decrease costs that goes into the street. We don't do that though because it's, it's actually very difficult to intercept those and bring them to homes. So they're really good for long routes, like if we're building a single purpose network for schools, I might do that. But if, but we always build ours with the intention of eventually connecting every business and city in the community. So we always. business and city in the community, so we always run into the utility easement, so that can be intercepted and connecting everything along the route. So our goal in this would really just be, you know, can we get a work session? Can we start, you know, working through that, you know, at some future date? But it would be useful to have a survey result, kind of saying, what's the level of interest, and we can help with the data that feeds into that, but...
We've had a couple of letters to counsel from residents begging for it. I know we're very, very mindful of debt and cost, so...
I hear it all the time, I know. I understand the pain of debt.
For us to, it's a little knee-jerk reaction, is the first time we hear about new debt is, oh, but...
Brand name's not a great one, you should rename, rebrand.
We renamed it to Utopia Fiber. It used to just be Utopia, but it still has Utopia there. We agree, but it's difficult when the name of the government organization is locked down, so...
And so that would be your call, if you'd be interested?
I don't know if you're suggesting of getting...
Let's find out first.
Yeah, and then if we could see that there was thirty-five plus percent that were very interested.
And knew the cost.
Yeah, if this was sixty...
Help me know what kind of question we should ask.
I'll work with Ken on the question.
I think it should be something like, if it costs sixty-five dollars a month to get two-hundred-and-fifty megabytes up and down with a fiber optic, would you sign up for that?
Okay, I'll work with Scott.
Yeah, we'll figure that one out.
And I know the survey is going out very, very quickly, like within the, are we thinking like within the month, Ken?
It will start on January second, and will be finished by the thirty-first.
We'll, I'll get you my card, and then we'll get contact information. We'd be happy to provide some questions we've used for others.
So I just want to make a couple of things clear. I think generally, when there is a survey that goes out to say, are we really serious about this, this is a little bit different than our citizen survey. I think our citizen survey is going to give us a flavor.
Yeah.
And if we feel that there's a pretty big sense of support for that, then I think we would do more of an official
Work session.
reach out. Well, we'd bring in a work session. If the council's interested in pursuing it, we would do a more official reach out to say, okay, do we really, are we really going to get thirty-five percent? So there's a few steps in here, I think, if we're going to pursue this. Putting it on the citizen survey, I think's a heck of a start. And we put it on our retreat agenda, and we can talk internally about how we feel about some of this. And then if we just feel this need that we want to pursue it, then we invite them in for the work session to get more of the details.
In the meantime, can you send us the presentation that...
Yeah, if you email it to me, Roger, I'll email it out to the council, so...
Great. One other point I just want to make that I thought of, since I'm not looking at my slides. There was a recent study that came out that said, what is the impact of a, just having the presence of a municipal fiber option in a city from before having it and not having it? And they said, whether or not you're a subscriber, the average decrease in telecommunications fees was twenty-three dollars. And so even those who don't sign up for the service would benefit, just because of the competition it would cause, you know, the, you know, the other providers, I don't like to throw too many stones at them, but they would probably lower the prices and/or upgrade their services. You would still, you know, we've seen, we still maintain a good take rate despite that. But Linden, for example, they bring that up quite a bit, in the sense that, so they feel that those who have the services have enormous benefit. And even those who don't like it, don't want anything to do with it, have had enormous benefit. The schools have also benefited. The city locations have benefited, and the public services, the emergency services, you know, they've benefited. There's a lot of additional things that happen, even for those who don't sign up for the service. So I just, I like to make that point, so... Any other questions for me? I appreciate you having me here.
Hi, thank you.
Roger, can we put that microphone back up? Sorry, thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on, now we have Candace Packer of the Greenhouse Center on Center Street. Beautiful, one of our beautiful buildings on Center Street.
Thank you. Yes, I am a therapist that works at the Greenhouse Center. We're actually just a hop, skip, and a jump on just one thirty-five west. And I've been asked to kind of just get the word out of what the Greenhouse Center represents, and also what services are provided. So I just want to give you a little bit of background information on the Greenhouse Center. It's been around for twelve years, and it was founded by Elizabeth and Gary Green, as well as Colette Dawson-Mublis. They're all LCSWs, and they're all locals. And they founded the Greenhouse Center twelve years ago. And currently, we have twenty-two therapists there on staff. And our therapists range from marriage family therapists. I myself am a licensed clinical social worker, so I'm an LCSW, and we also have professional mental health counselors on staff as well. The mission statement of the Greenhouse Center is, we support individuals and families facing life's challenges by enhancing their relationships, growth, and learning by providing educational and counseling services. So that's a little bit about the Greenhouse, but now I just want to share with you guys some stats. Some of the most recent stats I've been able to find are as recent as 2014. So we're still a little bit behind. But in 2014, the state of Utah had sixty-nine hundred cases of child abuse. Of those, twenty-seven percent were sexual abuse, and thirteen percent of them were neglect. So, sexual abuse, we have some of the highest rates in the nation. And neglect, we have some of the lowest rates in the nation. Another statistic that we have, we are the fourth highest in the nation for drug overdoses. And we are also first in the nation, unfortunately, for suicide deaths ranging of our youth from fourteen to eighteen. We are part of what they have now lovingly called the Suicide Belt. Idaho, Utah, Colorado, we're part of the Suicide Belt now. So, there is a great need for our services. And that is one of the beautiful things about the Greenhouse Center, is we actually specialize in attachment and trauma. All of our therapists are trained in those areas, as well as other modalities. And we serve every population you can think of, individuals, families, couples. We also do parenting classes, and we do groups for teenagers. We're starting to also open up our doors to the veterans' population, due to some of the struggles that the VA is having, being inundated with not being able to provide the services to our veterans. So I just wanted also just to let you know some of the services that we offer, or what we deal with. A lot of people ask, well, what's trauma? Trauma is anything from divorces and separations, car accidents, then to the really big traumas, rapes, sexual abuse, war. And we specialize in that. We also specialize in attachment, which means a big portion of our clients are in the foster care system. I'm a full-time therapist there, and I have about thirty kiddos, or I shouldn't say kiddos, thirty clients on my caseload, and about half of them are kids that are either currently in the state's system, or have been adopted through the foster care system. So we do a lot with that, because if you can imagine a young kid being removed from their home and not knowing what's going on, because it's drug-related, or neglect-related, or because sexual abuse has been substantiated, that can be pretty traumatic. And so we at the Greenhouse Center try to be as sensitive and tender to that, so that we can help those kids have a second opportunity at life. And trauma comes with depression, anxiety, anger, ADHD, you name it. We have the skill sets and the services that we have available at the Greenhouse Center. So I'm just trying to get the word out to let our cities know that we're here as a support, our, we have a good working relationship with our city. And when we opened up the Greenhouse Center, we had fantastic support from you guys. So we just wanted to return the favor and let you know, we're here to help the families and the individuals of Pleasant Grove, as well as surrounding cities, and to say, we're here, there's hope, there's help, and let us be that agency, so...
Thank you.
And I also have some pamphlets, if I can leave with you guys. So contact information, because I know I just kind of spoon-fed you with a steam shovel. It's kind of like drinking from a fire hose sometimes, but all of our contact information, and more in-depth of what services we offer, because we do trauma work, EMDR, play therapy, Santray, I mean, you name it, we do it, and we love it, and have a passion for it at the Greenhouse Center, so...
So, I want to add to this. The Greens are my neighbors.
I love the Greens.
I do, too. So, we had my, I have an older daughter, who when she was four years old, had a traumatic experience. We had a drowning in the home, and everything worked out, she was revived. But I didn't understand what post-traumatic stress disorder looked like. And so for ten years, she just had night terrors, and every one of them ended in somebody drowning. And so then it was just like, click, click, click. I started putting the pieces together, well, because the Greens are my friends. We just went down there. She was very, very comfortable going in, and honestly, within six months, the night terror ceased. We hadn't been able to discuss it in the home without her having a panic attack. And so then one time she stayed at the table, we were all talking about it, and she just chimed in and vocalized how she was feeling at that time. It was just, it was a miraculous change in our home. So I shout the Greenhouse from the rooftops. I am such a raving fan, anyway.
It's a fantastic place to work, and that's one of the beautiful things about healing, is that when you can talk about it without, this might sound different, but without the emotion behind it.
Right.
Because it's the emotion that keeps you stuck. And so if you're able to talk about it, and get your life back, and not be robbed anymore, that's a beautiful and miraculous piece of healing. And that's what we aim for at the Greenhouse Center, so...
It worked.
Oh, good. Any other questions?
Have you worked closely with our Victims Advocate in the Police Department, and talked to, we have a business on our main street, SoPlicity, the proprietor there is a former Victims Advocate as well. I don't know if you've talked with either of them, Rashawn?
I haven't had the opportunity, but that is something that we are trying to do, is more community outreach. And we are hoping to be able to add that to our connection and our networking area to work with in the community.
That'd be great, if you'd chat with Chief Smith over here. He can introduce you to our current Victims Advocate at some future point, and it would be a good connection to have. They may be able to get your help on some of their cases, or whatever.
Absolutely, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, 10A. To consider approval of a two-lot final subdivision plat called Walker Ridge Estates, located at 1285 East 300 North. Director Beaumont. Gosh, I wonder what it would be like to have faster speed?
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, can you imagine? I can't imagine, it's like a dream.
Yes.
Well, a hundred is playing for me.
So are you a recipient of Utopia?
I am.
All right, we have a little three-lot plat that's, well, that's currently, the Walker Ridge Plat A. We purchased three lots, lots five, six, and fifteen. This is lot five, six, and fifteen, that when they developed, we purchased those lots in anticipation of a future secondary water tank being constructed on that site. We're now at the point that we've got the funding and the budget to construct the Walker Tank, secondary irrigation water tank. And in order to do that, we need to remove this lot line that runs right through the middle of the property, and do a little bit of modification right up here on this lot, so that we can have access to the tank. So what we're proposing with this plat is a two-lot plat that would create, is that lot thirty-three, I can't see it there? Anyways, two lots, thirty-three and thirty-four, of Walker Ridge Estates, Plat C. Give you an idea, everything went to Planning Commission this last Thursday. This'll kind of give you a better idea of the site and the three lots. There would be a remaining lot that is a little over ten thousand square foot, which is the zoning requirement. And so we would have a potential, we haven't made any decisions on what to do with that lot, if we will potentially sell it and let somebody build on it, or... But we've kind of identified that area right now as some excess property, but we don't necessarily see a lot of use for right now with the city facility. But right now, we currently own all three lots. This is the potential location of that tank on that site. We just run down now to show you a quick site plan. It's really not particular to the replating of this. That's why we're doing it, but it's not, I guess, in your decision, it doesn't necessarily apply to that. This is kind of where the, again, the tank would look like. It's about a hundred and sixteen feet is the size of the tank we were able to fit on that site. There would be a pump house building. It's actually, we just found out today, it's just going to be slightly smaller in this, so we can fit all the piping inside the building. But would fit on that site within the setbacks. And then this is the concept view that's been up on the site for the last few years. It's slightly different than this. We've tried to get as much volume as possible that we can in that tank. I think the original siding was, if I remember correctly, was only a million gallons. Our minimum that we needed is one point five. But anytime we can get more storage, we try to get as much as we can. We'll be having about two million gallons of storage. Be one point seven five to two million gallons of storage is what we're going to be able to get on this site. They're just finalizing all of that this week, as far as the overall grading, and how big the tank can be, and how deep it will be, and all of that. So that's, that's the project. Planning Commission approved that last Thursday, with a conditional use permit for the tank, and the plat was approved as well, so... Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So is that a chain link around there, or what type of fencing is around the tank?
So right now, it is, it is a chain link fence shown around the top, very similar to some of our other, I guess, tank sites that we would have there. It's just really conceptual. We haven't determined kind of what all of the final landscaping will be. We do know it's in a residential neighborhood. We put this picture up there in anticipation that we're going to make it look a little bit nicer than our standard, no landscaping, typical, I guess, tanks that we have. We're going to try to make it a little bit nicer for that area, since it isn't a residential neighborhood, so...
And what determines if a tank is open or closed?
Culinary water tanks have to be closed. Secondary water tanks are just dependent on us.
So they could be either, okay.
It could be either closed or opened.
And the cost to cover it?
We anticipated about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to put a cover on the top of it.
Would that be concrete, or would that be...
It would be a concrete covering now. That would be more or less, I don't know that it would be the manila tank-type covering. It might have to be a little bit thicker. I think that was just assumed to cover it, so it's just sealed, and make sure that nobody can fall in it. But manila tank park may have a little bit thicker roof, because you can drive some small equipment, bobcats and things like that on that. But that could be looked at. I don't think it would be substantially more expensive than that. It might get up to three hundred thousand if we do it to where you actually cover it with landscaping, or something of that nature.
Leave it uncovered and sell swimming passes?
You couldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. But it would be fun for some kids. Because that water drops down in the morning, we would hope that that tank, so it's, right now, it's anticipated to be twenty-two feet deep. So we would expect it to be eleven foot down, so you'd have a high dive in the morning, and you'd have a very little low diving board in the evening.
So the plans do include the retaining wall with a fencing above that?
Yeah, we will have to do some sort of retaining. The tank will be about twenty feet from the back, from the property line. And so in order to get from that twenty-two feet down to get to that sidewalk, then we do have, we... um, we will have to deal with all of that relief, um, elevation through the property, so. Um, yeah, we'll have retaining walls to, to be able to make it nicer there.
So Marty, is it, is it an option to cover it? Do we haven't decided that question yet or we're planning to cover it?
We are not planning to cover that. Right now we have two point five million dollars in the budget this year. Um, with what we're planning, we will be close to that two point five million. So this would be something we would have to discuss as far as getting an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the budget for that project if we want to cover it.
Um, may, it might be helpful if, uh, people knew what the benefit was for this tank. What, why this tank?
So this, this tank is, um, very, so we, we've, in Pleasant Grove, we've had a real difficult time working with uh, one of our sources, which is from the Alpine Aqueduct. It comes, it's delivered through Central Utah Water Conservancy District. And we don't have any storage, we don't have adequate storage. We have a little bit of storage on the Monson Tank from the Alpine Aqueduct turnout. This tank would provide us the ability to manage our outflows from the Alpine Aqueduct. Right now, we're relying on a big tank that's at the mouth of, well, it's up by the water treatment plant in Orem. And they are gracious enough to, to allow us to kind of operate off of that tank when our, when our flows change. This tank will allow us to call for a specific amount at the beginning of the day and then we take that amount the whole day. Because they're, they turn that out of the Deer Creek Reservoir and anytime you make a change, um, it takes a lot of time to get that water down to you, so. We'll make one call in the morning and we would hope that that would set and fill up that tank during the day. So it's very important for us to have the storage. This also will, we're putting the pump station on there because we have a lot of problems in the springtime up in our, what we call the filter zone, which is only serviced out of Battle Creek. It's our highest zone. And, uh, we sometimes don't have enough flow coming out of Battle Creek with the, sharing the irrigation water and other, uh, water up there, um, to be able to provide enough flow into that upper zone. This, uh, pump house, um, that we're proposing on here would take water out of this tank, allow us to pump it up into that zone as needed. And also service the Walker Tank Zone, which, um, Councilman Stanley will appreciate if he gets it out of that zone. That's where your help is in the luck, in the, in the Battle Creek Tank Zone.
So, uh, does the pump, does, will the pump house make noise?
The pump house will make noise, but we don't plan to have any on the outside of the pump house. So we are, right now our plan is to have it sealed. Um, and we talked about this at planning commission. We'll, we'll put a chiller in there rather than having an open vent. A lot of time, you have to have circulation. We have to keep it cool because the pumps are running. Um, and, but we'll be completely sealed on the inside, insulated and, uh, and make sure that there's not any excessive noise on the outside. It'll be totally sealed on the inside.
Do we have any other tanks that are like this that you could, that are landscaped similarly? I know that, uh,
The Monson Tank.
That the Monson Tank? But it's not landscaped?
It is somewhat landscaped, but it's, um,
Oh, yeah.
I wouldn't expect it to be in the same level as this one. Someone will receive a little bit more landscaping and.
All right. And how big is that Monson Tank?
Quite a ways back. Uh, so there's a number of tanks there. There's a bunch of culinary water tanks. I think there's three culinary and then, then there's a secondary. The secondary water tank on that side is three million gallons.
All right.
This will be two million gallons.
Okay.
So I'm assuming if it was closed, we wouldn't need to do the fencing. Is that right?
If it was closed.
If it was, if it was covered, we wouldn't need to do the fencing?
Uh, that's correct.
Could you do an enclosed tank that's like a park, grass across the top almost?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what Manila Tank Park does up there by your house. It's just covered. Like I said, I think when we first did that estimate, we were just trying to get it covered and what that cost would be. Um, if we were actually going to be putting topsoil of a foot or two on there so we can grow soil and have minor equipment on there, we wouldn't do anything heavy but lawn mowing equipment, things of that nature. Um, it might increase that, that price just slightly to get enough, uh, thickness so that we can carry that load. But, um, yes, at that point, we could leave it open. One of the questions and, and the things that we'd have to address with that is, is maintenance and access to that. We, we did talk about that at planning commission as well. We would have to have a large enough access to be able to drop in a skidster or a bobcat, um, with a crane or something of that nature. Uh, that's how we kind of, those do get a lot of sediment in them. I wouldn't anticipate a lot of sediment in this one because of its location, but we will have to clean it occasionally. And, uh, we're, we're trying to work out a little bit different design on the bottom of this so that we can clean it, uh, just by spraying it down into a drain and taking it into a, a washout drain rather than having to get down in there and do a lot of, uh, work and bale it out with a bucket or something like that. So they are a lot of work. Um, once you cover them, then you have to provide for maintenance and access in a safe way. And, uh, something that's not too difficult to do, so.
And then.
Possible. It's all possible. It's not, I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying, um, again, that's adding ten to fifteen percent of our cost to that project to do it, so.
Can, can I just remind the council, the agenda item is to, a final plat approval? The project for the tank will come later and so you'll have an opportunity to discuss that.
Understood.
Tina.
I, I also though, just understand that our timing and, and that's very right. That's what I said at the first is that this really is a question about a plat. We're going from a three lot plat to a two lot plat. It meets all zoning requirements. So, uh, we recommend approval on that, but the timing on this is we are thirty percent done probably by the end of the week with the overall concept of this. The layout, the tank sizing, how it's going to sit on that site. And then over the next month, we would hope to get to about a sixty to seventy-five, eighty percent and then bid this out the first part of February. So we're moving really fast on this. So if, if there, if we need to throw this back on an agenda for the roof, that's important that we get now because, well, sooner than later.
Put it on an agenda.
A question about the site plan then, um, is that lot that you're leaving up on Dalton, is that, uh, is that enough square footage in that zone to be a, a building lot? Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, over here. Oh, sorry. I, I just wanted to mention, um, I, I'm hearing that we would like to see the site plan come forward. I just wanted to mention it is not a requirement by either conditional use or otherwise. Um, we, we've already approved the conditional use, that it would not normally come back to the city council for your review. But if you're requesting us to do that, we can do that.
I think really the only question that matters to us is whether we want enclosed or not enclosed, right? I mean, I don't have any other concerns about this project.
I, I don't about the site plan. I, it would be the cost, and I think for me, it would be the co, the annual cost of maintenance also, if it's closed.
Well, let's put it on the January third agenda. That's our next meeting and it sounds like we need to answer some of those questions.
We'll have a little bit more information about, um, at that meeting, so that's not a problem.
But can, do we, does anybody have any problems approving the site plan then?
Proving the plat, yeah.
So you need to, you need to address that now.
So are there any other questions about the site plat?
No, I'll make a motion even.
It's a, it's a public hearing.
Is it?
No.
Doesn't look like it.
It's not, I'm sorry. It says public hearing.
That's a different. So I'll make the motion, Mayor Protam and council, that we approve a two lot final subdivision plat called Walker Ridge Estates. Subdivision Plat C located approximately twelve eighty-five east, three hundred north in the R one ten, R one twelve, single family residential zones. And adopting all the findings, conclusions, exhibits, engineering requirements and everything else.
Second.
All right, so we'll have the motion by Ben and the second by Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's not by voice or anything, right Kathy? All right. Okay. Ten B, to consider the adoption of revol, resolution adopting the audit report and the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR. And we'll turn the time over to Denise.
I'm just going to introduce our auditors and then I'm going to turn the time over to them. They're going to present, um, our audit report. I refer to it as the CAFR, but it's our audited document. And so Ed Erickson's here. He's the partner with Hanson Bradshaw, Mammros and Erickson, and they're out of Bountiful. And then Aaron Hickson is, um, the audit manager. And so, uh, Aaron and I have spent a lot of time together the last couple of months, but, um, we picked their firm. Um, probably in June, May or June, um, we put an RFP out. We had, um, ten different firms. And they come in the top three and, um, Scott and I discussed that felt like it was good for us to, um, get a new auditor and get a new set of eyes. And so I'm just going to turn the time over to them and they'll talk about some things in the financials and share important information. And then we are required by the state of Utah to adopt it by resolution. And so after they present that, then we'll need to do that.
All right, thank you.
You guys' timing was perfect. You came like right, right when you were about to step up. That was perfect.
And by the way, I'm a Bountiful brave. Oh, my brother was a Viking. Our home was split, was divided. It was like the north and the south. It was horrible.
Thank you Denise. Again, I'm Ed Erickson. I'm the, I've been the partner on the audit and Aaron Hickson was the manager. I'm happy to, to let you know that Aaron Hickson will be a, a partner with us in two weeks.
Congratulations.
Well deserved. Uh, and again, as, as indicated, we are located in Bountiful, Utah. We audit several cities throughout, uh, Wasatch Front and we're very pleased and, uh, uh, grateful for the opportunity to, to do the audit for Pleasant Grove City. Think highly of, of your staff and we're impressed with their professionalism, their confidence. I'm going to, I'm going to turn the time to Aaron and let him, uh, talk about a few things in the cavern. I don't know if you have an electronic copy that you, so if he refers to something like on page thirteen or whatever, I think you've got.
It's in your Dropbox or.
And I emailed it.
Emailed it to you today.
Yeah, um, I may find it exciting, but I, I realize that a lot of people may not. And, uh, if there are questions that you, um, have as I'm speaking, feel free to interrupt, uh, instead of losing your train of thought. Yes, uh, as Denise said, we, uh, the city has chosen to issue a comprehensive annual financial report or a CAFR that is more robust than a, a standard financial statement. It includes a lot of statistical information and, and other information that is not, um, required at a basic level. And, uh, and I, I think it's a really great document. It has a lot of, um, interesting facts and statistics. Um, as well as a, a summary of your, uh, financial situation. And, uh, if you, uh, will turn to page thirteen of the document. Uh, this is the audit opinion. And, uh, even though I assisted, uh, Denise in drafting the financial statements, the only thing that our firm can really claim is the independent audit opinion. And at the bottom of page thirteen, you will see, um, the opinion and, and that is, uh, a clean or unmodified opinion. It is the highest opinion that we are able to give. And so, uh, that is to be commended, your finance department is to be commended. We feel like they have great internal controls. Uh, we feel like they have an attention to detail. And, uh, and that the city's expenditures and revenues are managed appropriately. The second section of, of the CAFR is called, is called the Management's Discussion and Analysis, or M D N A. And I'm going to focus most of my time here because this is kind of a, a layman's, um, discussion of the, uh, of the city. And I really like it because it's got comparative information. It compares current year financial information to the prior year and it just talks about why things were different and what changed. And so, uh, we will start by looking at page eighteen. Uh, you will see a very high level overview of your balance sheet and, uh, governments are required to, um, separate their, uh, their financial information into governmental funds and business type funds. Business type funds are like your utility funds where you, uh, have customers and you charge them and they receive benefits from that. Whereas your governmental activities are like your police and your fire and your, uh,
Services.
Correct, services like that. And so you will see here, um, the bottom right of this, uh, chart is the total. So that is government wide and, uh, your equity grew. It shows here twenty-six million dollars. Uh, twenty-one million of that was for governmental funds. Uh, there is one caveat on that. Of that, sixteen million dollars approximately is a note receivable that was recorded as a prior period restatement that I will talk about in a little bit. And so if you turn to page nineteen, um, of the document, you will see a summary of the, uh, income statement or your revenues and expenditures of the city. And, uh, your revenues increased about six point eight million dollars. Five point eight of that was for your governmental funds. And, uh, most of the increase in revenues is attributed to, uh, contributed capital. There was a lot of land that was donated as well as other infrastructure from developers, uh, that is given to the city. If you, uh, um, turn to page twenty, um, I really like this because this is a, a graphical representation of the revenues and expenditures by category. Uh, for instance, twenty-five percent of the citywide govern, uh, revenue is from taxes. Um, whereas, um, twenty-one percent of the city's expenditures relate to public safety. And so, um, this chart is really nice way for, uh, the citizens and other users of the financial statements to know uh, where the, the revenues are coming from and where the expenditures are being made. So, other highlights of the, the city that occurred during the year is, uh, that there were, uh, approximately nine million dollars of water revenue bonds issued during the year. Uh, but of that, seven point eight of it, um, was used to refinance existing debt, um, so that you could get it at better rates. I wanted to end my discussion, um, talking about the prior period adjustments that were made. These, uh, were, uh, one, related to, uh, a contract that you have with a developer. Uh, about two thousand and six, if I'm, um, correct. There was a, an agreement set up with a developer wherein the city's redevelopment agency purchased, took out debt for eighteen million dollars to purchase land and then, um, conveyed that land over to this developer with the intent of it being built on, uh, for a hotel and, uh, um, and a conference center. Uh, well, for various reasons, economic downturn, et cetera, uh, that development, um, was delayed. And so an agreement was made with this developer that, um, if there was a delay in the performance of the contract, that he would contribute to the city the debt service of these bonds, uh, both principal and interest. And so those payments have been, uh, received from the developer timely. And, uh, everything was recorded in your fund financial statements appropriately. But a, on a government wide basis, uh, instead of just receiving that revenue and putting it into the bank, what was appropriate is that a note was established for the entire amount. And so at that time, on the government wide side only, there should have been a note receivable for about eighteen million dollars. As of the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, that note receivable was approximately sixteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. And so we recorded that and so on your fund financial statements, you will record the revenue as you always have. And then on a government wide basis, that revenue will then reduce that receivable. And, uh, and there are some other, uh, stipulations in that contract, um, that, uh, will take place in the, in the coming years. That will then bring down the value of that note receivable. Uh, there was also another, um, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of capital leases. So when you, many times when you purchase, um, vehicles or other equipment used for public utilities, et cetera, um, you will do that through a lease agreement. Uh, when we sent out confirmations, um, to the, um, leasing companies and also a reconciliation performed by Denise, it was found that, that there was an inadvertent leaving off of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of the leases. And so we just, um, increased the debt and the asset on the books. To reflect the actual lease, uh, obligation as of June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. obligation as of June 30th, 2016. And then finally, there was a, an adjustment made in your business type funds. As I said, this year, you took out $9 million of bonds, mostly to refinance existing bonds. Well, there is an accounting requirement that when you have issuance costs for debt, you capitalize that and then you amortize it over the life of the bond. And so if you refinance a bond, you should just accelerate that and write it off in the year that you refinance. There was approximately $177,000 that were not written off. And so we just wrote those off. And, and so those are the three. I want to stress that operationally, everything was doing, was being recorded appropriately. And these three relate to just accounting requirements on how you record it. Governments are unique in how they record things. For the most part, revenue in, expenses out, fund financial statements. But they also about 12, 13 years ago said, hey, we want to make our financial statements look more like a business would have. And so they convert from fund to full accrual. And, and so there's a lot of various accounting requirements. And so these relate to those. And so I don't want you to feel like there was a, a problem with the, the policies and procedures of the city because they were recording the revenue as they should have. On the fund financial statements, everything was okay. These are just conversion entries. Finally, I wanted to move to the end of the document where it starts on page 106. There are two separate reports that we are required to issue. And the first one is a report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with other matters. As I said, governments are a little bit more unique in that they want us to come in and look at your internal control environment and give a, a report on the condition of those internal controls. And that is something that is not done in any kind, any other industry. And, and so we came out and we looked at the internal control environment and we did not find anything amiss. And we, we feel that your internal controls are designed effectively and that they are operating effectively. And, and again, that is a commendation of your finance department and all those involved. And then finally, the, the last report is on page 108. The state of Utah has an audit compliance guide and they want auditors, independent auditors to come out and look at certain criteria that is important to the state auditor's office. And they are listed in the middle of page 108. We look at justice courts and treasurer bonds and open meetings act and retirement system and just to make sure that you are complying with state law. And we did not find anything of non-compliance. And, and so overall, the year went very well. I feel like Scott and Denise and their department managed the funds very well and they communicate to the directors and those involved to make sure that the funds of the city are important to manage and, and they do a great job. And so if there are any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions?
I'll just thank you to Scott and Denise. That's a lot of work. Thank you.
I've got a couple of quick questions. I came just before this meeting from a meeting of a rec department and they were talking about some new recommendations, I assume came from you guys, about cash refunds and things that they're doing slightly differently. I don't think there were any problems, but they were just adjusting a few things. Is that, yes, is that right?
I can talk to that a little bit. With the, some things, as we were preparing for the audit and we were looking at things, I talked with Karen Bezent, she's a city treasurer. And we started looking at some things that they were doing that we felt could be doing better. As we were approaching the audit, just different things that I was aware of that they would look at and things like that. So they'll be making some good changes there. They're going to be going to a merchant through the Sportsman software that will help refunds and some other things that I think will help. It'll speed the refunds up and it will also, there's just one more thing that you take away for fraud or those type of things when you're issuing refunds through a different way. So that was pre-audited a little bit as we anticipated that the auditors were coming and we started to look at things. Another thing we started looking at is how they were dealing with cash over and short. Not that they have a lot, but that's something that you need to look at. So we started doing a report and those type of things.
Great. It's good to hear, thanks. One of the things I had some questions about, last week there was a finding up in Salt Lake that some of our annual city celebrations are actually operations of the city. I don't know if you looked at any of those kinds of things in the process of this audit. It was probably too late of a determination to look into for this audit, but transactions like, we do use a lot of cash. We see a lot of cash transactions in our Strawberry Days festivals, an annual city celebration. Is that something that would be included in a future audit if that is a city operation that wasn't included in this audit, do you know?
So that's a good question. And our concern as auditors is to make sure that the financial statements present a material, from a materiality standpoint, fairly, the operations of the city. And so when we come out, we will make a judgment and we will look at high dollar items. And, and so focusing on things that are, that don't bring in a lot of money is, is not something that we would necessarily look, look at unless there was cause, there was reason, there was a, a theft or a fraud or something. We could look at something that was smaller. Desegregated, or excuse me, decentralized cash collections is something that we would focus our efforts on if it was warranted. And so I don't know specifically how much your Strawberry Days brings in in revenue, but I do make sure that whenever cash is collected, that there are proper segregation of duties and that you have, when possible, a lockbox and two people present and just basic controls to make sure that what you should be collecting, you are collecting. And then what you've collected is being appropriately deposited into a bank account controlled by the city.
I can answer that just a little differently. When we went through the audit, there, I mean, we have never done the Strawberry Days Association. It's considered that a city function as far as the audit's concerned. So they were not instructed to look at that. Like I said, we don't even have the records here at, at the city. In some ways, I think that issue still hasn't been resolved. I mean, we do have a, some findings at this point, but I think those will be addressed and I think eventually we'll figure out whether that's going to be a city function or not. So for the purposes of this audit.
I just think it's important to clarify, the findings that council member Stanley referred to were from the records committee and they were specific to the records. That does not cross over into the financial area at this time. So that statement is a little too broad for what, what we're dealing with at this point, moving forward, depending on how things are resolved, how the, how the celebration goes forward. They may be involved if the city takes over the celebration, but at this point, that's not the case.
Hasn't been determined, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Tina, Scott.
Right. No, they didn't.
You weren't, yeah.
It's not.
That's what I assumed. I just wanted to understand that for certain. Thank you.
Does it sound like?
All right, I need a motion. We don't have to have any.
Yeah, it's another quick question of Denise before you guys, maybe Denise. We don't have the PAFER yet. That's a, or do we have the PAFER?
The PAFER, I'll prepare after this is the final document. And this, the CAFER I need to get into, the JFOA, which is the Governmental Finance Officers' Association. We are certifying that. Will be on the second year of the PAFER, but I don't know if we're ready to certify that. But I'll get that out in the next couple of weeks. And that's the summary of the CAFER.
Right.
Just the pretty version.
The pretty, the pretty interesting version.
And so there is no particular deadline on it, whereas this has to be filed with the state auditor at the end of the year.
For those of us who are not the analytics, but we are the expressions, expressionist, the, the PAFER is very good for us.
The ones that like, the ones that like 12 pages instead of 108 pages.
Although I challenge every one of you to read this cover to cover.
I'm on it.
The others will.
And we'll also have this up on our city website and available to the public. It says draft on there. Do we, do we have a final copy?
The two documents that we need to, the management rep letter needs to be signed and Scott and I have signed that. And then the pro temp needs to sign that tonight. And then an updated attorney letter, which they received earlier today. And then we can finalize the document and put it out there.
Yep. They'll put that up online when it's finalized.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion for adopt Resolution 2016 dash 052, adopting the audit report and the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFER, and providing, providing for an effective date.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Eric and a second by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution probably needs to be by voice.
Needs to be by voice.
That's, that's why I wait for you guys to tell me so then I can start thumbing through everything. Okay, it's this one. And by voice, last page. All right, Diana, yes. Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And Lynn?
Yes.
All right. It's unanimous, kind of, without the mayor.
He doesn't vote anyway.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, it has his name up there with a box next to it. Oh, that's right. All right. Next, we have, this is our item for discussion on the development, rezone and road vacation on 220. Director Beaumont. I love saying that. It's very French.
The, last week at our development review committee, DRC, we had Harrikey, I think it's Dickinson or Dickerson?
Dixon.
Dixon.
Came back and talked with the development review committee about their plans for the project that he's looking at on Pleasant Grove Boulevard at the intersection of 220 South where it connects into Pleasant Grove Boulevard. And we thought it would be good for us before we move too far forward. And so my recommendation to him at that meeting was that before we move forward on wasting a lot of time and money on a site plan, it would be good for us to get through the requirement of removing the road from the transportation master plan because that's where it's shown and that would have to be done first and there's no guarantee that you will decide that that is a wise choice. And so we wanted to bring before you as a discussion item and get some direction to make sure that we as staff have a better understanding of your direction on this site. And, and I guess I was understanding in a certain way from the discussion item that he had on the work session. And I want to make sure that we're proceeding the right direction on this. What was shown, and as discussed, right now, the connection would be here at 100 South. This is Ray Proctor's home. This is the Garden Grove development that's currently being developed here. Currently, when they developed, they dedicated 100 South essentially along this boundary to this corner point here on the back of Cambria, of the Cambria subdivision development. So we have a good portion of this road that has already been dedicated to us. And so we're missing the middle piece here. The claim was by bisecting this larger tract of land, which, which is this piece here and it goes out about 90 feet wide or so along here. This is Mr. Goodwin that we talked about last year. Anyways, that parcel is that size and it comes along here. So his discussion was, what do we do with this? If this is bisected, then we've got some smaller lots that would be created that could potentially be commercial lots, office space. And then there was the discussion on potentially the low density housing concept here and extension of Garden Grove development potentially to come across here. And so this is the current site plan that was posed to us. So what Eric came back and showed was a concept of what he was thinking would be a building on this site. And one of the things that we had talked about at the time was the importance of the trail system, making a connection through here because there was a planned trail along that corridor as well. And so there is a plan to put a trail from Pleasant Grove Boulevard that would connect over to 13th West through this area. So that was maintained. As far as what they own, they own what you can see landscaped here. They don't have any ownership of the two parcels, I think there's three parcels.
There's three parcels.
The city owns this front parcel here. There's two homes that are on parcels as well. And so his proposal was more or less, this is what we would like to do. This is kind of what we would like to move forward with, with the concept of removing the road through the property and these houses here would be an extension likely, but he's saying not guaranteed, but likely purchased by John Dester, who's a developer of Garden Grove. And so the question really that we would like to have answered is kind of the overall view of this. We talked previously when we were here before the council to discuss this property about the impact to the transportation corridors of 13th West, Pleasant Grove Boulevard. And, and our recommendation was, there is a value to the road. The value, it's not that it has no value. There is a transportation aspect of this that will be impacted slightly. That, the amount of that impact is rather small. It, it does have an impact. We had Horox quickly look through the old transportation master plan, which was done in 2009. They did it. And I said, could you quickly just look through and see what would be the impact of removing this road from the model and what that would do? The level of service D capacity is your, kind of your minimum that you would ever like to see on a road. You would like to see it operating in level of service B or A. But you can see here that the capacities of 100 North, Pleasant Grove Boulevard and 13th West, those are the anticipated based on the model to, to get a level of service D. Right now, our, our transportation master plan build out volume shows them significantly less than you can see the, the actual capacity for a level of service D. And then you can see what would happen if we got rid of 100 South, that it would go from 15, 400 to about 17,100 vehicles per day, which is still significantly below what our level of service D is. So, so you can see there's really not going to be a huge impact necessarily on the roads. There is a less, loss of connectivity through the area. The, the road would be used, there would be traffic on it. So there is a value to the road. The question is, is kind of which direction does the council feel like we should go on this? And before he goes too far, kind of what, what all needs to be included in the site plan in order to you guys, for you guys to feel comfortable in that this is the right decision to remove the road through the property? I don't know.
Can I, yeah, can I add? The other, there's two aspects. One's the road going through. Do we want that to, does the council want that to go away in order to accommodate this site plan with an understanding that what the developer's asking for is going to require a rezone of these? Right now, this is commercial sales, it's not allowed to have housing on it. So there's a rezone needed here and then it'd be the removal of the road here. So kind of two pretty decent sized questions, I think, for the council to consider. If you remember, when he came in. If you remember, when he came in to visit, he talked about these properties here, these three here, that he was interested in buying those. I know he's talked to our real estate agent that has those listed. He had an initial conversation, then has not talked to him since then. So I don't know if he's really interested in buying those or not, because it looks like at this point, at least in DRC, he wants to move forward with this. So we were hoping that he would pick this up and develop this at the same time, which would be retail ability here. Whereas this would, this could be retail here, but he's saying that he wants this to be office. So there's not a retail component here. And then we have the housing component. So as a staff, as far as recommendations, on the road, our preference is probably for that road to stay. But it's, as Marty's explained, it's just not a killer if it goes. So if we really want this project to go, to happen, then the city council will need to remove that road. Then there's part two, which is the housing, and that's just straight up a policy question. Is the city council willing to deal with a little more density there? And this is just a tough piece of property. This changes if Mr. Goodwin ever sells. Mr. Goodwin, in conversations with him, that's not happening anytime soon. So if we want to be patient on this piece and wait, wait for that property to become available, let's say it's 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, then there's a potential for something, maybe retail, to be a part of that. But right now, that's not what the developer's asking for. So we didn't want the developer to get so far down the road that before we, if the council's going to say no to the road, then he's probably done. His project's probably done. If we're going to say no to the housing, that might kill his project as well, at least with this developer. So that's why we wanted to get in front of you, to kind of get a feeling, if there's a sense from the council, the road can go and the housing's okay. We can relay that back to the developer. He can proceed. We're not taking a vote tonight, but we just want to get a sense of where you're at. Because if the feeling is, we don't want that road to go away, or we're not okay with the housing, we need to communicate that back to the developer sooner rather than later.
And if I may, in my mind, there was a, part of that question was not just what has been said here so far, but maybe greater emphasis on the fact that his site plan does not include retail development. That's something he's talked about, that maybe he'll do, or whatever. But in my mind, it's turning out to be a question, is the value or the lack of value of the road a good trade for getting an office building and additional multifamily housing? Retail is not a component of the site plan.
That's right.
Right. Retail is the other.
The other property that he is not, he's not buying about right now. Yeah.
Any questions, first of all?
A couple of quick ones. Marty, you talked about the LOSD. Can you kind of give me a context of that scale? Is it like an academic grade scale, A to F, if F is failing, or is there a different?
Not necessarily. Really, what you're looking at when you're talking about level of service is delays and volumes. So what you're trying to say is that somebody driving down that road is not going to be backed up at an intersection for a certain period of time. So when you get to a certain length, it goes, kind of, it's a graduated scale down, but it's not a direct A to F. You have A through E, and then that's really failing at E anyways. Anyways, so a D is kind of on the poor scale. But as you can see there, we're not really even close with that in either of those. When you're looking at a level of service D, we're not getting close to the level of service D even by removing the road. It doesn't necessarily mean that there's no value to having the connectivity through the area. It just means that if it was removed, that you're not likely going to have to go and widen Pleasant Grove Boulevard or 13th West to be able to maintain a higher level of service. It likely will be able to maintain a good level of service even with the additional traffic volume. We do lose the connectivity through there and the potential for some of that traffic to go that direction.
Go back to the other one. I have a question. Is it better to have 220? So I see that, is that his in right there?
Yes.
And do we have a turning lane right there at that point on the Boulevard?
Yeah. The site plan, we talked about a lot of things in DRC. One of them was that he would have to have a full turnout lane. The landscaping's not showing along Pleasant Grove Boulevard. He would have to have a 25-foot landscape strip in the front, just like across at Curtis Miners. You can kind of see the landscaping in front of this building here. It would be similar on this other side. So, yeah, this isn't meeting our current codes and standards. It's just kind of his portrayal of what he'd like to do. So we gave him all those things. As far as lining up there, we would say definitely line it up if it's going to be.
It's better to line it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll want to line up. There's going to be a signal at some point. There's a planned signal here, and I would guess that that will happen at some point in the future. It'll be a three-way, well, it'll still be a four-way signal. One of the ways would be able to go through and go into the development in this concept.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? So what do you want from, what are you looking for us to?
We want kind of feelings on two issues. One, are we okay if the road goes away? And two, are we going to be okay if that is, that property is rezoned to allow that density of housing?
So my thoughts, just quickly on those two questions, is that, you know, it's not a massive new impact on the roads. It's not a huge problem, but there's not a lot of value I'm seeing we get by getting rid of the road. I mean, we want retail. That was sort of your point, right, Ken?
Yeah.
Not a retail component to this. Higher density housing, which we know the public isn't that interested in. It's hard to see the reason why we would do this. Is it, is it the beauty of this particular office building that we're excited about that might convince us to do it, or?
Well, and on top of that, for me, the question is, with that road there, is that even a retail developable? I mean, are we dividing up that piece of property so much that it is, we're actually rendering it useless?
Well, and I think that's a good point, is that we, I think we were surmising from the previous conversation we had on this, is that we might get some retail out of this, and that by not bifur, bisecting, bifurcating? Mixing those two words up. Bisecting this property, that we were allowing more acreage to be used together as one development that could have a significant retail component. But if he's not including retail and only suggesting office, then like Ben says, what is the value of giving up this property? I mean, yes, if we kept the road, it's going to keep it two smaller properties, which both could have smaller developments, be it either retail or office. But we would have the road. Right now, we would just not have the road, but we wouldn't have the retail.
Any other comments?
I don't know if he brings a restaurant on a pad there. We'll do it.
Well, and that's, I think that's exactly why we're here. That's not on the table.
Right.
And that's not what he's asking. And.
I did ask for it on the main floor.
When we had our initial conversations with him, I think he met with me and the mayor and Diana and Marty. And we talked about a lot of things, and we tried to get it in his head that retail would help drive, in essence, some of the things that the council would say, okay, we're okay with this if you can deliver retail. And so he kind of went with the things that we had talked about, but then didn't deliver any retail. And so as staff, as we look at this, we're like, I'm not so sure as a city, we're maximizing the revenue we could get off this piece of property. And so we're a little nervous to say, to give this guy some direction at this point, because those are two pretty big decisions, I think, as far as what we need. So that, like I said, as far as staff's concerned, I.
Can I ask one more question, though? If, the original understanding that I had, that I took from some of the meetings, was if this property here came in with the overall site, that maybe this would be okay on that site if they, if he was incorporating the retail aspect to the overall site plan. Is that, did I misunderstand that from what was previously being said? Is that kind of the concept?
That's fair to say.
That was, well, that was consistent with what you guys told him when he came and met with you. That we were very interested in him picking up this property and developing and master planning this whole thing and getting some retail here. That made the city feel a little better about giving up the road and actually adding some housing. But then this dropped off and went away. And so now he's coming back with this, and we're saying, well, that's, that's a little bit different than the direction the council gave us, you know, six weeks ago. And we wanted to talk staff and council, you know, straight up as far as kind of where we're at, so that we can go back to the developer and give them some direction.
What is the current zone right now? Commercial sales?
Commercial sales.
Okay.
It seems to me like staff understood our direction.
Yes.
That is how we feel, I think.
Yes. And so that was different. That's why we want to, I guess, confirm. If the council's still there saying, we'll entertain it if this is picked up and retail's put here, we'll entertain this a little better. We'll take that back to the developer. And if he's serious about doing this, and he tries to pick these up and develop that, that's great. If he says, you know what, I just don't want to do that, then, you know, he doesn't buy the property and we wait. And eventually, somebody will develop that.
Confirmed.
Yes. Sid, agreed? Lynn, agreed? Okay, agreed.
Okay.
Unanimously.
We'll take that back to the developer. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's review. Actually, I don't have, oh, yeah, I do. No, I don't? Oh, no, I don't. Oh. Hey, we're not going to meet for two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Next year, for the rest of the year.
So, sorry, for January 3rd, we're just barely starting. There was just a couple.
I just got into the mode of just how we work.
There will be some items on that agenda, but as of tonight, we don't have a whole lot to go over with you, so.
All right. Anything else anybody wants to add? Any questions? All right. Nothing? All right, let's go neighborhood. Tina, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Okay. I should go, I'm going to go back to Libby. Nope. All right, Ken?
Uh, no.
Hey, David?
Nothing.
Dion? Marty? Chief Dave?
No.
Party tomorrow. At your place? At your store station?
Four to six.
Perfect.
We'll be there.
It is, what is, what are we calling this one? Holiday or something?
Holiday with the heroes.
Holiday with the heroes. All right.
What I loved about the advertisement was it said Holiday with the Heroes, and it made it clear that, from their perspective, they were considering the public the heroes. I thought it was really gracious.
Yes. All right, Chief Mike, welcome home.
That was, that was just a reminder that we're doing that meet and greet tomorrow at the fire department. Have some hot chocolate, candy canes.
And caroling.
Thank you for offering, Diana.
You can't go wrong with caroling.
I don't know.
Even, even. I'm a resident. All right, Sherry?
I wanted to thank Officer Lystrop for coming to our staff meeting slash party and answering questions about safety in the library and what to do in patients. He did a great job, so thank you.
I put him on notice that there would be absolutely no dancing.
Well, I introduced him as Officer Nene, and several of my staff did. What are you talking about?
I thought we would send around the YouTube link.
All right. Denise, well done, by the way.
The audit's done.
Yes.
Yay, he can breathe.
Merry Christmas.
Enjoy the holidays.
Budget.
Start on a budget.
Well done.
I just want to follow up, too. Denise has done a fantastic job for us. And with new auditors, it is a huge process, because everybody's kind of new at everything. So there were a lot of extra hours that Denise put in. I believe a Saturday or two, and things like that, to make sure that we could get that thing done. So appreciate her efforts.
Yes.
But other than that, no.
Yes, thank you.
You already asked me?
Yeah, I did.
Kathy? Good. So I have a little Christmas gift to the staff and council. And there's a little story behind it. And this is from me and my family, too. Not, no city funds were used for the purchasing of these Christmas presents. But anyway, there's a card from my family, and then there's a $2 bill. And some of you may know the story, that when Geneva Steel purchased US Steel, they gave their Christmas bonuses out in $2 bills to all of the employees and instructed the employees to use it in the community. So the community and the local business owners would know that they were back and they were ready to start a new business in the community over in Orem. And I talked to my mother-in-law about it, and she remembers working at Evans, the decorating store, and she remembers seeing a lot of the $2 bills coming in during that time. I guess the wife's got a hold of the bonuses that went in, put it back into the community. So a lot of the business owners recognized that. So I obviously can't give you an entire bonus in $2 bills. But there's just one $2 bill in here for each of you that if you want to go buy a cupcake or a drink at Harts or a hamburger or something in our local community, that is the intent. So Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Sid.
Wonderful. Eric?
Ben?
I just had some question, well, just a really quick one. We saw some emails circulate about the possibility of an executive session. Does it, looks like we're not planning on doing that?
That was in reference to the Strawberry Days decision from the State Records Committee. We still have not received our official findings letter from them. So until we receive that, we'll let Tina do some research. I'm assuming on January 3rd, we'll be having a discussion about what our possibilities are moving forward on that.
Great. Thanks. Appreciate that update. I've had a few questions. That's all I have. Happy Christmas. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Hey.
Thank you.
Ditto. Merry Christmas.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I talked with the mayor the other day. Now, normally, leading up to Christmas Day, on Christmas Eve, if City Hall is open, we shut down City Hall at noon and give the employees administrative leave for the rest of the day, in essence, meaning they get paid, but they can go home and be with their families. Christmas Day is on a Sunday this year. And so we don't have a need to close down City Hall four hours early. And as I was discussing with the mayor, he said, will you suggest to the council that I'm okay that that Friday, the 23rd, that we don't have City Hall open that day, and we have the employees stay home and be with their families? So.
So moved.
If the city council's okay with that, we need direction from you. That's on the mayor's recommendation. And so I'm glad I did not forget that.
Unanimous?
Do we need to take action? Or, yeah, I mean, I think we're all grateful for that.
Okay, that's fine. We'll pass it on to the employees. Thank you. The employees will be very grateful for that.
What about like the library and the rec? What about those departments?
They still do their own thing.
So we actually decided to close on the 24. No, yeah, that's Saturday.
This Saturday.
Okay.
We're, normally, we close half-day, but it's usually pretty quiet in the library on Christmas Eve. So we decided to just close that day. We will be open on the 26th, which is the federal holiday, but it just, that doesn't really make sense. Because people expect us to be open. So we'll be open then, and the full-time staff will just find other days to take off.
Same with emergency services. They will still be performing and doing their thing. But certain segments of the city will be shut that Friday then. Thank you.
I had a question. I forgot. I wanted to, I wanted to hear how the brown bag lunch went today. I couldn't make it. I had a conflict.
So what we do, we've been doing this probably for three or four years. Every six months or so, we'll invite the employees in for a brown, we just call it a brown bag lunch. We buy some cheap pizza. And they come in, and it's not required, so whatever employees want to participate, we usually have about 20 to 30 that come in. And then I just update them on what's going on in the city. And sometimes we don't think, for those that attend this meeting every Tuesday, you know what's going on, because we live it every Tuesday. Well, most of our employees don't attend this meeting. And so when we talk about the Grove Tower, and we talk about what's going on with 100 East and the developments that are happening, most employees are not aware of those things. So I just give them a basic rundown of the big projects that's happening in this, in our city. We talked about the Public Safety Building today and kind of what the plans were moving forward on that. And then I just open it up for questions if the employees have anything that they want to ask, if they have questions that either the public's been asking them or they just have for themselves. And it's just an informational thing. We take about an hour and.
It's very nice. It was interesting, you know, that they do, hey, what's going on on 220? Or what's happening behind the bank?
Yeah, I went through all the stuff. And then, so what about this? I forgot to add that, but they were asking about the ACIA. They see a building going up, and, you know, most of our employees don't know what that is. So, yeah, we live it. We know exactly what it is, because we're here every Tuesday. So we, we get them all cut up on that. So that's the brown bag. We do it probably about every six months.
Thanks for doing it.
Very, very nice. All right. Are we ready to adjourn?
No plans.
Review the calendar. Nothing till the January.